Hey, everybody. So we're going to get started here shortly. So if I can have people start making their way to their seats. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. This is the Seattle City Council Position Eight Forum. This has been organized by community members from D5, and we're really excited to hear from the candidates. We're going to start off with hearing from Pastor Laura, who's going to give us some details about the facility.
Thanks, Shane, and thank you all for being here. Welcome. While you're here, we want you to make yourselves at home and feel free to explore. If you haven't been in the building before, if you're in need of a restroom, I don't want you to have to hunt very far. So just go out this door, take a right. It'll be on your left. If that one is a gender-neutral restroom. If you're looking for more restrooms, there are some directly above it and directly below it. There's an elevator around the corner as well if you need that to get up or downstairs. And if there's anything else that you need, look for me or anyone else who's wearing one of these name tags, and we will help you to find it. So welcome. We're glad you're here, and let's get started.
And an extra big thank you to Pastor Laura and the Hallow Lake United Methodist Church for being willing to host us today. It's now today we are lucky to have Colleen Echo Hawk. She is a longtime advocate for many issues in the city of Seattle, and she's going to be moderating for us today. And I'm going to let her take it from here.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Sean, and thank you to Renee and TJ Pastor Laura. We appreciate you. And congrats to all of you all for being here and being part of the audience tonight. You should feel great about yourself. You are some of the most important people in Seattle tonight to get to hear from these wonderful, wonderful candidates who are going to tell us a little bit about what they think. They're going to answer some questions that have come from the community. And I really want to clarify that as we jump into this panel, that this, that these questions have already come from the community. There will not be an opportunity for questions from the audience. So we just want to make sure everyone's clear about that. But I think you're really going to like these questions that have come from the community. They are thoughtful. They are provoking. They cover almost every single issue in the city. You are going to be impressed with how well these questions have come out. So I just want to, and I didn't, and I didn't actually create them. I got to give a little bit of commentary at the end. So thank you, thank you for being here. And we also just want to thank our candidates for being here. We appreciate you. Thank you for taking this risk. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for caring so much about our city. And I can see it in your eyes. I've talked to every one of you. I know your histories. I know your background. And we are from, the whole audience, from everyone watching, thank you for doing this. It's really important, and we are grateful. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. So our opening question is one that is really easy and will just kick things off. We're going to ask each candidate to introduce yourself and state your top priority. You're going to have 90 seconds. We have some wonderful timekeepers. If they can raise, raise your timekeeping apparatuses, please. There you go. And we are going to get it kicked off with, let's start in the middle. How about we start with Alexis and just keep, keep things surprised, keep things shaken up throughout the night, tonight. So let's start with you, Alexis. And go ahead and take it, take it, take it away.
Amazing. Well, happy Pride Month, everybody. My name is Alexis Mercedes Rink. I'm a renter, a transit rider. I used to be a waitress, and now I'm running for Seattle City Council to fight for a city that works for all of us and not just a select few. In my public policy career, I've built a reputation for bringing people together around solutions and making them happen. I got my master's degree at the UW, and since then, I've worked across 39 cities and with over 100 different organizations on housing and the health of our communities. I brought together five cities under unanimous votes to regionalize our response to homelessness and created King County's first severe weather response plan because climate change is here and now, and we must act to save lives. Today, I work as the Assistant Director of Policy Planning and State Operations at the University of Washington. And I was brought to this work because of my upbringing, because I'm proudly raised by my grandparents, because of my birth parents' involvement in the prison system with substance use disorder and homelessness. I could have gone to the foster care system, but I got the opportunity to grow up in a resourced community and got the tools that I needed to heal. I'm here today as a living testament to when we invest in young people regardless of their beginnings, we can change generations. And my birth dad is alive today because of a transitional housing program. We need to protect those investments. And in the wake of our city's budget crisis, we need to implement progressive revenue solutions. Corporations need to pay their fair share so we can keep our libraries open, so we can develop housing, so we can keep our community safe, so we can help folks recover, and we can expand our transit system. I'm so excited by the momentum of my campaign with over $120,000 raised in our kickoff event with 140 folks in attendance. Some familiar faces here. And some endorsements from key progressive leaders, such as Senator Frame, Senator Saldana, Representatives Reed, Representatives Macri. I'm just grateful for the support and ready to deliver on progressive policy at council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's move on next to Councilmember Wu.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tanya Wu. I'm a city council member, affordable housing provider, neighborhood restaurant owner, and community advocate. So I grew up on Beacon Hill and now live in Rainier Beach. I have deep roots here in Seattle. I went to high school here in North Seattle. We'd go to North Gate after school and on the weekends. And so this is my hometown. Serving as your citywide council member, I've tackled our toughest issues head-on. I organize community safety teams to tackle our public safety issues. I redeveloped the Louisa Hotel to provide workforce housing that combat gentrification and displacement. And I championed government accountability and helped our unhoused neighbors in crisis. And so as we are transitioning and finding our new identity, there are three things that are crystal clear, and these are my priorities. Number one, it's public safety. How do we create safer communities for people? How do we make sure that we have the right response to the right situation in acknowledgement that every single neighborhood is different? We need to make sure our first responders have the resources they need to be effective and ensure timely and effective emergency response. Second, we need to invest in how do we help our unhoused neighbors and address homelessness? We need more resources that include addiction treatment. We need crisis intervention programs and programs that bring people inside. We need to build trust, especially with our unhoused neighbors. With the financial crisis growing, we can't afford to continue strategies that aren't working. Third, we need to address the cost of living and affordability. With my experience in developing affordable housing, I believe I could bring creative solutions to the city of Seattle. I have a couple of things I'm working on in legislation to help kickstart being able to build more affordable housing. And so I've committed to delivering compassionate results and focusing on what matters most. I have a simple agenda, and that is to serve you. And so again, my name is Tanya, and I'm asking for a vote to keep Seattle safe, affordable, and compassionate place to live.
Thank you so much. We're going to pass it down and take it away.
Hello, my name is Sanatina Sanchez, and I was born here in Seattle. I grew up down in the South End in Holly Park, King Way Apartments and Yessler Terrace. And growing up in the projects and being bus-to-school here on the North End, John Rogers was one of my elementary schools. And I learned to swim at Meadowbrook Community Center. I really did see the disparities between the less-resourced and the more-resourced communities. And I made it my life's mission to serve my city in Seattle in various volunteer and work positions, including at the Seattle International Film Festival. I've worked at the Downtown Emergency Service Center. I've worked at Treehouse for Kids, and I hold a yearly fundraiser for my birthday and get, you know, donations for the, in that process. One of my, my top issue is housing. And the main thing I want to focus on is the rising rent and property taxes. We are being nickelled and dimed when we know we can raise progressive revenue and actually have the funding we need to maintain a livable city. As a candidate committed to the future of our city, I am dedicated to tackling the urgency of stabilizing where people are now, providing public resources like 24/7, 365 bathrooms in parks all throughout the city, and making sure that we solve the long-term aspects of our housing crisis with, as I said, progressive revenue, like a Seattle capital gains tax. Thank you so much for having me here today, and I look forward to answering further questions.
Thank you so much. Well done, everyone. We're going to talk about the transportation levy next, but just take a deep breath and know that you did a great job getting through that. We're all here for you and are cheering you on as we go through these questions. So the next question is about the levy. The levy to move Seattle is up for renewal in 2024. Mayor Harrell has proposed a $1.45 billion transportation levy. What are your opinions of the proposed levy? And we'll start with Councilmember Wu this time.
So thank you. I am excited about the transportation levy. Tomorrow, we have the Select Transportation Committee meeting at 9:30. I encourage you to tune in where Councilmember Saka will be introducing an amendment that will increase our transportation levy. So he's proposing to increase it by 100 million, which brings it to a total of 1.55 billion, which means that the average homeowner will have to pay about $500 a year. They're currently paying $300 a year. And so I think this is a great investment when it comes to building more sidewalks, when it comes to getting and realizing our Vision Zero Plan, as well as how do we make sure that we are looking at our climate goals and equitable development when it comes to sidewalks and potholes, and being safe, and making sure that people are able to be safe in their communities and not have to worry about being, walking down the street and being injured. And so I'm excited, and I hope that you will learn more. And please send us any comments.
Great. Let's pass it to Santiana.
Where we spend the transportation levy money matters just as much as how much we're raising. And currently, the transportation levy focuses far, far too much on car infrastructure. And we know that the majority of our carbon emissions comes from vehicles, especially the single occupancy vehicles. We have a massive sidewalk, missing sidewalks here in District Five and down in the South End, the far reaches of the city who are often neglected. And so I believe that we need to increase the portions of the levy that are going to transit services, to creating sidewalks, and to making sure that the residents of Seattle can connect to infrastructure like our trains and buses. Because if somebody can't roll a stroller or go in a walker to their local bus stop, they're not going to be able to access our city in the way they should. So I do think that it's great that we have, that Saka has increased the levy. At the moment, it is still not nearly far enough that we could go. And I am hoping that we can increase it for, as I said, transit infrastructure and sidewalks especially, and reduce our dependency on the car infrastructure. Thank you.
Transportation's really front of mind for me. As someone who actually doesn't own a car, I took light rail on my way here and then hopped on the 346 and then walked on a sidewalkless street to get here today. And I have that in front of mind as well, thinking about the five individuals, I believe, last week, who were pedestrians who were struck and killed. We're far away from accomplishing Vision Zero. And so as we're looking at this, this levy, which does include a number of critical, important investments in our infrastructure, we know we need to go farther, looking towards the future. And preceding the release of the levy, an amazing coalition, including Cascade Bike Club, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, 350 Seattle, The Urbanist, and Disability Rights Washington came together and identified a variety of investment needs in order for us to be able to fully meet our needs for safety, equity, mobility, and our climate goals. And they estimated that it would cost about $3 billion to be able to fully invest across the board. And so as we look to the future, I hope to use guides such as that. What community is saying is truly the need in order to scale our investments so we can fully achieve and realize those goals for safety for everybody and achieve Vision Zero.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job, folks. Yeah, they deserve a little round of applause already. All right. Well, we're going to talk about policing next. And whoever wrote this question, I just love the way he wrote it. It's full of drama, so everyone get ready. The departure of Seattle's last two police chiefs have been shrouded in secrecy and controversies. What qualities would you like to see in our next police chief? And what will you do as a council member to ensure that the next chief will be held accountable to address systemic issues confronting the Seattle Police Department? And let's begin with Alexis.
I think it'll be tremendously important as we're looking for somebody to take on leading SPD, somebody who has experience with culture change. I think we have to acknowledge that we have a culture issue within SPD, and I think that's putting it lightly, given the news recently. So looking at somebody who has experience leading organizational change to guide us through this moment and would also encourage us to think creatively around who are some other types of leaders that we could call upon. I look to our King County counterparts with King County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Patty Colton Dahl, who started up in human resources and only became a uniformed officer later on in her career. And just thinking creatively around where are other types of leaders we could pull in and encouraging that we have a nationwide search in order to find that person. And would close by saying along the way, we need to be really evaluating our accountability measures for police. And as a potential Seattle City Councilmember, I would be leading that charge for police accountability.
Let's pass it to Councilmember Wu.
Yes, I'm also very excited about the prospects of Chief Surar. I know she championed guardians, not warriors. And she's amazing when it comes to 30 by 30, making sure that there is diversity in our police department. And she was part of Obama's 21st Policing Task Force. And so I'm very excited about all the amazing things that she will do. I also know that she's very interested in coming out into community. I think that's very important in a future police chief as well, is making sure they make the community connection, build that trust, learn what's happening in our communities. Also advocating for alternative to policing groups, making sure that care, we can expand that program from six people to be able to serve all of Seattle. I love lead, and we deliver care and reach and making sure that, you know, there doesn't need to be an officer that responds to every single situation. We need the right response to the right situation. And I also think that, you know, it's, it's really important that we, we try to lead in the next, you know, 10, 20 years, and there's consistency, there's compassion, and especially that community outreach so that we know that there's a partnership and there's trust, which is what we need in terms of culture, that we are able to, we are able to hold our officers accountable and are able to chat and reach out when we need to and know that they are with us in community and are attentive to people's needs, as well as making sure that they're in partnership with all these community groups that are doing similar work out in the community.
At this moment, we're seeing what a blank check for the police department can do for accountability. We don't have as many metrics of successes as we place on something like the Equitable Development Initiative that's currently trying to be rated, as we do for police officers. And so tying our budget to what we want from these services is vital to accountability. Are the services that the public wants, like crisis care services that show up without somebody with a gun who can escalate the situation to a negative degree up until death? That's the kind of thing. We don't want more guns in our neighborhoods. We want people who can, can show up and care for a person who is experiencing a mental health crisis or a medical emergency. And so I think tying the, creating these metrics of successes is like, how well does the police chief actually create care in the community through the programs that they're being funded in? And should that funding be moved to a different department that could better care for our people in the city? So that's how I think we can go with accountability, is saying it's for, it's about the funding.
All right. Excellent. So we have gotten through our first three questions, and we're moving on to a lightning round, which is very fun. So if our candidates are ready with your cards, pull them out, that'd be great. We have, hold up the green side if you don't mind so everyone in the audience can see. That's a yes. And then if you flip it over, you'll see that there is a no there. And we're going to ask you to, you know, be quick with these. We, these are our questions that hopefully you have really quick answers to because, and they're, they're very important ones, as you know. All right, the first in our lightning round. Last week had a proposed amendment which would have reallocated the unused funds from the Equitable Development Initiative projects. Would you have voted for the proposed amendment? All right. Thank you. The next lightning question. If you could have voted on the recent proposed changes to the app-based worker minimum payment ordinance, would you have approved the proposed changes? It's not really fair. Just, just, if you, you, you have an option, but we're all, we're all looking for answers on all of these questions, if possible. Thank you. All right. The next one is sex trafficking is very visible issue here in D5. Do you believe the city should focus on criminally penalizing the buyers and traffickers rather than the sex workers? All right. This is the second to last lightning question. Builders in formerly single-family zones are not required to build sidewalks where they are missing. Seattle no longer has any single-family zoning. Would you sponsor an ordinance to require all builders to add missing sidewalks or asphalt walkways to their projects? All right. We, we here in North Seattle would very much appreciate that. Do you support a universal basic income for the city of Seattle? All right. Great. That is the end of the lightning round. Give them a round of applause. All right. We're going to go next to three more questions where each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. The first one is around the budget deficit. And we're going to start with Santiano this time. The city is anticipating a budget deficit of around $250 million. What is your approach to reducing this deficit?
I would like to point out that we actually started the year with a $200,000 deficit. And the raise that current, the police department got upped our deficit even higher. And so one of the things that, in my previous question, was about making sure that we're giving funding to the right sources and then focusing on progressive revenue, at the same time focusing on progressive revenue. Implementing a Seattle capital gains tax will cover our budget deficit in the first cycle that it's applied. And so if we're not using the tools at our disposal, we are going to have an austerity budget. And that is the opposite of what Mayor Harrell said that he wanted in, earlier in January. So we need to focus on raising revenue that we know exists in Seattle from billion-dollar corporations who are using our public resources and aren't paying their fair share back. So, thank you.
Alexis, what do you think?
Absolutely. I think it's important to add context to this moment as well as to kind of how we, we got here. And we've talked a bit about the fact that throughout the pandemic, there were, there was funding that came in from the federal government to support a community during that time. And a number of programs were stood up to address community need. Now, as we're in a different phase of the pandemic, it's important to note that the needs remain high, higher than ever. And so winding down those programs is not a solution for the sake of our community. And so to echo the support for local capital gains and while also addressing the other additional progressive revenue options that are potentially on the table, from a real estate transfer to also looking at expanding Jump Start, we need to get very serious around a progressive revenue solution. Without it, there will be cuts. And our communities need to be at the table and aware of what kind of cuts may happen. We saw a horrific example of this last week with an amendment introduced at the final hour to be voted on that did not include community in those conversations. Community was blindsided by this action that would have frozen $50 million in funding. And so with that, I, I testified last week in support, pardon me, in support of our Equitable Development Initiative funding against the amendment because as we approach a really challenging budget season where we need to get real around our revenue solutions, we have to keep communities at the table. We need to be transparent about the position that our city is in and what is on the line.
So this Wednesday is our Select Budget Committee meeting. I think that's at 9:30. I also encourage you to tune in where we're going to have an update from the Progressive Revenue Task Force. And so from my understanding, it was a bunch of stakeholders that convened, including business leaders, community leaders, nonprofits, who got together and suggested a series of progressive revenue suggestions. I think all but two. There was some legality in terms of state law. And so I think we really have to advocate on the state level for a change in our progressive structure to progressive revenue. And that involves advocacy and working with our state legislatures. But until then, I want to make sure we set some reasonable expectations. You know, our, our table has been set. We are right now in the process of learning how we got here. And that's looking at, you know, this one-time funding that we got during the pandemic and all these one-time projects that have turned into continuous projects that are important, that we need to fund. But we really need to understand how we got there and look at things like inflation. We've, we instituted hiring freezes. But, I mean, there are going to be some really tough decisions, and there may have to be cuts. And so there are, I am really curious as to what Wednesday committee meeting will bring, if anyone in the, in the council will bring forth any progressive revenue suggestions. I think the two that the task force had recommended that were actually legal, that we could do, are already being done. And so I'm interested to entertain any ideas from fellow colleagues on if they want to expand these options.
Thank you. Let's start with Alexis's time. All right. This next question is in regards to the draft Seattle Comprehensive Plan. Mayor Harrell recently released the draft Seattle Comprehensive Plan. What are your thoughts? And do you believe the plan meets the needs of Seattle over the next 10 years?
We need housing in every neighborhood in Seattle. When we know that supply increases affordability and without zoning to provide for that supply, affordability is unachievable. The top-line number in the plan does not go high enough. We need to take into account the fact that climate change is here and real, and we, as a region, may very well experience an influx of new neighbors as a result of climate disaster. Additionally, we should be looking at the proposed neighborhood centers that were initially put forward and looking at how we can expand the number of those and looking at how we can expand the number of those and also expand the size of those across our neighborhoods, while also enhancing transit oriented development and looking at how we can expand the block size of transit oriented development as well. I I share in some of the initial concerns of the 43 neighborhood centers that were initially studied and would love to reexamine the ones that maybe didn't make it through and how we could uplift those again. And I think it's important to elevate the need for a genuine expansive anti displacement strategy to truly serve the region. Seattle's history of development has perpetuated and concentrated growth displacing communities of color in South Seattle, namely. And so we need an anti displacement strategy that is tailored and appropriate for every community and really focuses on intergenerational wealth building opportunities.
So I've been to every single comprehensive plan meeting because I want to hear directly from people what they think of the plan. And without a doubt, everyone's telling me that we need to build more. We need to build more and they don't think this plan is adequate is what I'm hearing. And so the mayor will transmit his comprehensive plan in, I believe, towards the end of summer, beginning of fall. It's a little bit late, so we're we're giving some leeway in when it gets transmitted. But the council won't see it until after budget, which is December to early January. And so if you have any comments, please send them forth. There is still time, depending on what the mayor's plan is. I'm hoping that there will be some changes. I'm a little bit disappointed that the gentrification displacement has been removed. As someone who grew up in South Seattle and has built affordable housing in the Chinatown International District, I've dealt with gentrification displacement directly. I know it looks different in every single neighborhood and we experienced it here in North Seattle as well. And so I'm really hoping that that gets added in and I've expressed my concerns. I also believe like, you know, we do need to build more and we need to also look at the implementation. I'm working on legislation right now that will allow for that kickstart and being able to build more and looking at zoning. Well, just in case that that build being able to build more is not in the mayor's plan. We have an insurance policy where we can have incentives for developers to build that affordable housing, which I think needs a kickstart. And we also need to look at our our climate goals as well when it comes to building housing. I don't believe it's trees or housing. I believe it can have both. And I'm also looking at legislation that will do that.
The climate crisis demands a bold approach and we need to plan for more homes in Seattle. We need to change our zoning code to allow for more homes in every single neighborhood. If we want one Seattle, as our mayor keeps saying, we can't isolate each other into different zones. We have to be able to coexist in the entire area and allow neighbors to come into every neighborhood of our city. I was a I two of my childhood homes are no longer standing down in Holly Park and in Yesler Terrace. And so I have a very visceral understanding of what it is like when areas of the city are kept from being upzoned and there the city, the homes that need to be built are forced into very into same areas. And we don't actually get that much of increase in homes compared to if we upzoned places that are currently are single detached houses. In terms of the tree canopy, for the same reason, we need to make sure that we give height and density bonuses to planners, to developers that do create these kinds of amenities for our neighborhoods. We we are the Emerald City and we should keep it the Emerald City. And the final thing is, is I have very extensive experience living in public housing. And I now sit on the board of Community Roots Housing as the resident representative. And I know that we have the ability to build in our city if we're given the opportunity and the support. And that's what I'm dedicated to doing.
Thank you so much. Let's start off with Councilmember Wu for this question, a very north end question. In Pinehurst, we have experienced ongoing power outages due to the deteriorated infrastructure in the power grid. Many impacted are lower income renters and immigrants. While Seattle, while while City Light has prioritized infrastructure replacements in similar circumstances in neighborhoods like Wedgwood and Magnolia, they have not had a sense of urgency for the issue in Pinehurst. How would you ensure that areas like Pinehurst receive the same basic services that wealthier communities receive?
Thank you, yes, I think it's equity issue, making sure that the communities are being heard, especially the ones who don't normally are given attention to or don't have the resources. And so making sure that, you know, that the city council person connects communities with agencies and try to collaborate and work on situations. I know it's a huge infrastructure issue with aging grids. And so making sure that when we it comes time and we have the equipment and the resources to be able to replace that, that communities that are mostly comprised of working families, immigrants, refugees, will have the opportunity to be able to get this infrastructure replaced first versus communities that have better and more resources.
Thank you. Pass it down to Santana.
Our power grid has been neglected as has lots of our infrastructure over the last few years due to an austerity mindset in our culture. I think that we can get back to actually building in our city if we implement programs like robust apprenticeship programs. I'm developing one right now in the Community Roots Housing system where residents who have an interest in going into a trade are able to connect with maintenance workers and other employees of the Community Roots Housing staffing that and make those connections and increase our workforce and bring more construction jobs and construction opportunities to Seattle. The scheduled maintenance, we need to make sure that our systems, our neighborhoods are on an audit. We need to make sure that there isn't a single area of the city that is neglected. And all of these things come together again with funding. We need to make sure that we are passing progressive funding so that we can hire skilled workers and train the new generation of workers in our trades.
I think I'd echo what these two have mentioned, namely around just the the need for true equitable decision making when it comes to our infrastructure investments. And specifically how sites and areas of the city are selected as it relates to this. And so looking at, you know, the the path forward, thinking about how major capital projects are funded through energy utility rates, we could also look creatively and explore bonding out to be able to fund something in a more immediate term or even getting creative with real estate excise tax. This is the kind of stuff I nerd out about my day jobs in a budget office. And so thinking through tactically, what is it we can do? What are the things that we can tap on? How do we build the momentum to coalesce energy to be able to identify revenue in an immediate term? To be able to fund something in the immediate term because folks' lives on the day to day are being affected. And the city needs to be responsive to that when it comes down to providing basic needs such as electricity and sidewalks.
All right, well, that is the end of that round of questions. Give them a round of applause, folks. You all are doing a great job. We're now going to move to another lightning round. So get out your beautiful red and green cards there and we're going to dive right into it. The first lightning round question is, would you support legislation that requires developers to include affordable housing in their projects rather than paying a fee to provide the affordable housing elsewhere and not in their project? All right, yes is all around. Do you think that option five of the comp plan update goes far enough towards bringing new housing and affordable housing to Seattle? Two no's and one yes, thank you. Should Seattle Department of Transportation enforce removal of eco blocks if those who place them did not give proper notice and receive approval? Or if the blocks are placed on a public right of way and not on private property? All right, yes is all around. Do you believe that protesting should be allowed at Seattle officials' homes? We've got a no, yes, and a no. All right, thank you. Have you supported or attended any protest at Seattle officials' homes? No, yes, and no. All right, thank you so much. That's the end of the lightning round. Round of applause, friends, that was good. That was a spicy one. All right. Up next, we have about six more questions where you're going to get to receive again the 90 seconds. And then we'll have a close from each of the candidates here. And we're going to start off with Councilmember Wu. This question is, access to high quality, affordable childcare is essential for all families with younger children of all incomes. Childcare providers rely on blended funding to keep their businesses afloat. How will you work with the county and state to support, maintain, and incubate new childcare centers and family providers in Seattle?
So many childcare centers are small businesses and are struggling as such. And so I believe incentives with helping with permitting and establishing their business, a lot of them are entrepreneurs. So how does the city and the county help with these small businesses to get started? And also, how do we allow for employers to help contribute? To allow employees to be able to work and also have staggered hours to be able to have their children in childcare and make it easy for people? Especially, I know there's a lot of initiatives and making sure that, you know, there are days and stagger time so that their providers would allow for more children. I think we also need to look at how we can work together in in communities to allow for these centers. And how do we make them easier for them to get started and deploy? And that's also looking at, you know, legislation. I know we have a levy coming forward that would help early preschool and early learning centers especially. And making sure it's equitable and that everyone has access to them. So childcare credits, I think is something I'm really interested in. And also just allowing for for just also, there are a lot of immigrants and refugees and a lot of language barriers. So how do you make sure education is there to allow for these centers to provide access and education to the community that where English is not their first language?
Amazing. And so just to voice support for the families, education, preschool, and promised levy, I would be a strong proponent in making sure that we continue that levy so we can equally support in our young people across the region. And especially braiding that funding and making sure that all of our childcare providers are aware of other funding opportunities as well, such as Best Starts for Kids, the countywide levying that supports young people around the region and includes a childcare subsidy of support, as well as looking at state level resources as well. And additionally, would voice the need to be elevating our union partners throughout this process as a number of folks who are pro childcare providers represented by SEIU 925, just for example, and making sure that they're at the table and engaged strongly as we're looking at really addressing the childcare crisis. I think we're all struggling as to figure out like, how do we balance the needs of working families and sustainably invest to make sure that our our young people are able to be safe and have what they need to grow up healthy and well?
I believe in integrating the systems and services that we operate here in the city of Seattle. I was fortunate to grow up in an era where we had extensive community center programs that were designed around working families being able to drop their kids off for daycare or even evening care sometimes and be able to go work at the shipping yards or, you know, in the industrial centers of our city. And that's something that I heard from the carpenters union especially is that they are finding it very hard to get childcare, especially for third shift workers. And so one of the things that I'm dedicated to doing is looking at our partners like Seattle Public Schools and like the community centers that exist around here. And how can we hire more people that are from the city's perspective and have municipal childcare services? What is it that we as a city can provide for the people of the city? And how can we fund that? I go back to progressive revenue. And so the childcare crisis is about where we put our priorities in our budget. And so if we actually believe that we should have world class care for all of our children in the city, we should put the funding for that project in our budget.
Excellent. You all did a great job on that question. Thank you, thank you. I could hear your passion for young people and for parents and for the city. So thank you for just really giving your heart in that answer. I think you all did such a good job. So I also want to say, our timekeepers, give them a round of applause. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you so much, TJ and Renee. Renee's saying she's not doing it, but you did you did a lot for us to be here today. All right, well, this next question is one of the most abbreviated questions we have in the round of questions tonight. And we're going to start with Alexis. And it's also one that we hear a lot about. It's very important to the city of Seattle and to the residents here in District Five. So it's a very simple question. What will you do as a member of the council to improve public safety?
I would center in on the response that we need a quick response. We need the right response and we need an effective response. And so really identifying the appropriate scope for what? What is the right scope for our law enforcement? And then also, how do we scale our alternative responses and really coordinate across the board? Because we have a number of providers from Health One to the new care team and really coordinating to make sure we're building a robust alternative response. Paired with that, ensuring that law enforcement under new leadership to come is working on that culture change, but also looking at how we create a truly accountable law enforcement, including civilian oversight in the next SPOG contract. And pairing with all of that, addressing the critical needs in our community around housing, making sure we're investing so folks are able to recover. I've been a big proponent of mobile medical treatment as that's something I've learned when I've worked alongside our unhoused neighbors and is a critical need. And then making sure that we're also keeping guns out of the hands of potentially dangerous individuals and investing in gun violence protection and community violence intervention prevention strategies. And most importantly, through all of this, listening to what communities need. We need to make sure that we're building a system where there is a felt response when folks are experiencing real true lack of safety and making sure that we are building an accountable system.
Thank you so much. I'll pass it to Santana.
Public safety comes from public care. When people feel included in their community, they want to care for it. My experience doing mutual aid in Cal Anderson Park shows me this every work during the pancake breakfast that I help host. When mostly houseless people are were done eating for the day, they are helping us clean up. When I was helping a warming shelter during the freezing days we had in January, we had many of those residents sleeping out on the street on Nagel, sweeping up the leaves and preventing the lakes that tend to develop from sidewalks and making it impossible for people to cross. And so I've seen the care that can come from the community that is often thrown away when they are cared for. And so that is at the heart of my sense of public safety. It is what do the people of the city need to thrive? We need resources, we need bathrooms, sanitation services. If we had a cleaning crew at every transit station as opposed to three security guards wandering around, not really doing much, maybe we would have a better transit system and people would be more feel comfortable using our systems. Maybe if we had somebody at the end of bus lines to help with the driver and manage our system, make sure that our services are actually well maintained, people would feel more included and want to maintain things. And so that's at the heart of it is public safety comes from public care.
So regarding public safety, I believe there are four things. We need, first off, community empowerment. So I know we can't depend on this for most neighborhoods. But during the pandemic, I strapped on my mask and started a alternative policing group. We patrol the neighborhood, develop relationships with the small businesses there, residents, as well as our unhoused neighbors and try to connect people to resources. I've done things where I've given CPR and Narcan to someone from suffering a overdose. And so being out in community and realizing what the problems are and addressing that and and also partnering with different nonprofit groups who are doing very similar work and advocating and asking for things like lead or reach or we deliver care. We've the community advocated for a program funding very similar to the Third Avenue project for our community and are very excited that we potentially might be getting these funds. But that came from community empowerment, community request. Speaking of that, the second thing is, of course, how do we help our young people? How to make sure that community programming such as libraries and community centers are open and that our young people have someplace to go and someone to turn to if they need help? The third thing is resources. We need to make sure that there are case managers, there are people out there, there are alternative policing service workers who are making that connection with our unhoused community, building that trust to bring people inside and that there's addiction treatment and wraparound services, basically. And the fourth thing, I think, is economic revitalization, which means how do we help our entrepreneurs, our small businesses? They are the souls of our community. How do we help them be healthy?
Great, just go ahead and keep the mic. We'll go to you next, yeah. Nice, sorry to interrupt the applause, you guys. I'm sorry, that was a great answer. All right, our next question. How would you work with your colleagues on council, both those who share your political views and those who hold different political views from your own?
Yes, thank you. I think it's a very exciting time to be on council right now. We are all in person and so we in person. And so we kind of just, there's a lot of collaboration and a sense of friendship. I made amazing friends on council. We check in often. We chat and check in and collaborate. And so we're constantly visiting each other in each other's offices. I think it's all about finding common ground. We all really care about our city and most of us have grown up here. And we know our city. We know our neighborhoods. We know the difference between Al Kai Beach and Pritchard Beach and Matthews Beach and everything else. And so like, how do we, how do we especially build those relationships, find that common ground and work towards a common goal? I think when it comes to council, we have shared priorities, public safety being one of them. How do we build more housing being another one of those priorities? And I think I'm excited that, you know, we're all working together towards a common goal. We have some amazing things coming forward, transportation levy, the comprehensive plan, and a lot of sense of camaraderie and being able to share the experiences and collegiality. And I think, you know, one of the most important things about being leaders that we uplift each other. We're not here to tear each other down. We are here to make, we are here to make everybody feel like to uplift and support one another. And I think having a great team is a great representation and of the city in itself because we all care about the same things. We all want the same things. And so how do we work together to get there?
Let's just pass the mic down.
Amazing. So I've gotten a lot of experience doing this work professionally, working across the aisle, working across the political spectrum. Once upon a time, I worked for an organization, a membership organization of 38 cities, working for all of the elected officials of those 38 cities. As you could imagine, opinions varied on every issue. But my job in that was to bring together caucuses at times of eight different people from eight different cities across the spectrum and work with them to coalesce around a policy solution, around a position of our group. And having done that work for years, that served me well when I've done that work around homelessness as well. Having worked across our entire county with every city and over 100 different organizations to get us to coalesce around solutions to address homelessness. Now, we need to fund those solutions, but we got this community to a place where we got unanimous votes between two boards on a plan to address homelessness. And I'll tell you, there was a long way to get there from running over 40 workshops to, again, working across all of those cities. And with that, then, in my job at the UW, it's a huge university, one of the largest employers in the state. And we represent and work across the entire university to represent budget priorities. So working across all of our academic units to be able to really represent and balance priorities and needs. So I bring all those examples up to say, I'm bringing that experience to be able to really champion and work across all of the members of council to do the hard work so we can land on solutions to best serve our community.
I come from a community organizer's perspective. And so my initial response is to say that I am excited to work with the council members and their communities. One of the things about position eight is it is an at-large. And so this position, make sure that if residents aren't being heard by their district representative, they have another person to go to, at least two. And so that's one of the things that I'm really excited to do is talk to my fellow council members and tell them about issues that they might not be focused on that affecting their neighborhood. Because nobody can do everything. We all have our special expertise. You know, mine happens to be in transit, transportation, land use and housing. And I look forward to working with the representatives, with the council members whose expertise is in budgeting or is in marine, you know, biology or, you know, the maritime industry. It's mixed. But that's, that's one of the things. My history of working with the various organizations in Seattle goes back to when we didn't even have bike lanes. And so I would have to work with businesses in the various districts and show them polls, surveys done of their customers that they were getting a lot of business from people biking and walking. And they were the ones that went to the city and advocated for more bike lanes, more bike racks. And so I look forward to working with council members and their communities in making the city better for everyone.
Thank you so much. And just go ahead and keep the mic and we'll have you answer the next one. The next question, and we're, we have two more questions and then you'll get to share your final thoughts. So this question is, what are your thoughts on how Bruce Harrell is doing as Seattle mayor? And what would your working relationship be with him?
I feel like Bruce Harrell and I have similar backgrounds, having grown up in the South End, being, you know, proud residents, lifelong residents of the city and the region. And I think that he has a great vision for the city and we really need to break out of focusing on a very narrow group of people who are being listened to. As we've been discussing tonight, we seem to be stymied in a lot of ways on projects that have been being developed for years, budget provisos being frozen. I was with, I was working with the Seattle Renter Organizing Council last year in order to get a $50,000 budget line item for the development for an Office of Renting Standards that would help both people who are renting and property managers, people who are managing properties, to be able to have a single place to go that isn't focused on just the development, because that's currently how the system works. And so these are the kinds of projects and programs that are currently being frozen and it seems to go against what we are trying to do in his vision of a one Seattle. And so I really am excited to come into the City Hall and be able to work with the mayor on these issues. And, you know, as he said in January, we don't want to go down an austerity pathway with our budget and I want to help make that not happen.
Great. Let's just pass the mic down.
Amazing. Well, definitely looking forward to work with the mayor. As with any standard government relationship, you know, the executive branch will transmit something to council and then it's council's time to weigh in on a given piece of legislation. And so especially given this position representing citywide akin to the mayor, I imagine that the, the type of work and the type of conversations and the ways that we hold citywide interest will be really similar. So being able to balance and have the candid conversations where we disagree, those who know me know that I'm good at that. But being able to know where we disagree and know where we can find alignment will be really, really critical as I definitely think we have a lot in front of us as a region as we're setting the trajectory of where we're going over the next 20 years.
Thank you.
So Mayor Harrell grew up in Seattle. He grew up in South Seattle, very involved in community. His mom had a flower shop where I5 now is. He, he's experienced infacationist placement. He's experienced all the changes Seattle has undergone the last couple of years. He was here before districts arose and represented the entire city. And so it's amazing to be able to work with somebody who cares about the city, who grew up in the city and really is in community. And before Mayor Harrell became mayor, we always saw him out and about. He was always walking around in community and neighborhoods and we saw him often. And that's one thing I really admire and respect about him. He is part of the executive branch and city council, legislative branch. So there's, we act as oversight, basically. And so I think it's, it's realizing that, you know, for every single piece of legislation, budget is always a moral document. There's always a lot of nuance and there are always a lot of voices. And so I think one of the most important things is making sure that people are being heard and reaching out to people who are furthest away from government especially. I think the mayor does a really good job of that and going out to community and trying to hear all those inputs. And so I think it's, it's great that, you know, there is this consensus that we all want to work together to make sure that we do what's right for Seattle. And now that we are in districts, as well as having two citywide council members, we really depend on our district council members to really be in community and tell us what their district needs that there's representative. And so as a citywide person, you really have to make sure that there's that balance, that you are working together with the district council member and seeing the bigger picture of what's happening in the city, similar to what the mayor is doing, but at the same time, work together towards common goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass that mic to Alexis and we'll have one more question. What are your thoughts on what is going well in the city's response to the homelessness crisis? And what changes would you make? As part of this, please address your thoughts on sweeps.
I think we have a number of tremendous service providers across Seattle that are carrying forward the work in a tremendous way. We know that homelessness is caused by a myriad of things. So many things can happen in our lives that could find someone out on, on the streets unhoused. And our service providers from Compass Housing Alliance, Mary's Place, Chief Seattle Club, Urban League are holding the weight of many social failures. And I wish we had a better system overseeing and supporting their work so they can do their jobs well. And that's not fully the moment that we're in. As a little ray of hope, KCRT just voted for their new CEO. So I think we can all celebrate that and truly, truly hope and push for the stabilization of that organization that is overseeing the homelessness response system and get it on a path of functionality so we can reliably resource the system and make sure we are getting dollars out to service providers so they can continue to expand their work and do the work well. As it relates to sweeps, I think we know from a standard service model that one of the best ways we can support somebody in their path to housing is making sure that they can maintain their relationship to their case manager. And so they're walking alongside them as they are working into a housing option and getting stabilized again. And so with that, I support models such as the encampment resolution model, which has prolonged and brought broader connection. The encampment resolution model, as funded through the State Rideaway Initiative, which has seen amazing success when we place somebody into a housing unit and work alongside them for weeks to get them into that unit.
Homelessness is, I don't think we can ever say it's going well. We are hopefully not going to be having people sleeping on the streets for very much longer if we actually take it seriously. My thoughts on sweeps are that they are violence that I have experienced personally. As I said earlier, I was part of a group who was supporting a warming shelter on Nagel next to Cal Anderson Park for January through March. And we were, we were evicted pretty much every single week and up till the end, twice a week, because we weren't supposed to be there apparently. And one of the, somebody drove by and said, go somewhere else. And I asked, where? Where are we supposed to go? And that's what is at the heart of my issues around homelessness is that we need to stabilize people. We need to make sure that encampments that do pop up are supported with sanitation services because that's what people are concerned about is we're not being able, we don't have the public services people need. And then they use other places that aren't appropriate. And we're blaming the people who are, have the least at this problem because the people with the most don't want to share. And so I think that yes, sweeps are violent. We should stop encampment invictions today and actually support the people of the city. The majority of people who are sleeping on our streets are from here. They are not strangers. And even if they were, we have asylees and refugees who also need support. Thank you.
So my volunteer team, we go into encampments. We do the outreach and engagement. We build trust with our unhoused neighbors and we try to connect people to resources. So I support the mayor's plan on encampment resolutions. I know it's not ideal, but I do appreciate that, you know, case managers and service workers are supposed to be at these encampments two months ahead of time to build that trust, to build those relationships, to be able to offer every single person that encampment housing before they could resolve that encampment. And so I've been there on days when encampments are being resolved. And, and I think going forward, what I would like to see is more caseworkers and even neighborhood folks going out there in encampments and trying to build that trust. I think a lot of people have been through a broken system where they've gone into housing that did not allow for families to be together and not be able to have their pets or their things. And it's really tough. And so how do we build that trust? How do we build those relationships that the people feel safe and are willing to come in? There are a lot of case managers where that person is not, joining that person throughout their entire journey. And so how do we make sure that, you know, when they go into housing and when they move on to permanent supportive housing, that they have that person there that they can trust and see through their journey? I think that's one thing that we need to focus on. And I believe that instead of, you know, just housing, we need to make sure we have those wraparound services so that people have the resources they need to succeed. We also have to look at community. A lot of people I know who find housing come back and see encampments because that's where their community is. They're lonely. And that's where their friends are. So how do we build community in spaces where people feel safe? And I think the most important thing is that trust.
So much. Well, that is the end of our formal questions. We want to thank everyone who submitted a question and participated in making sure that we had these excellent questions tonight. We thank you. Thank you for being a part of this community. Thank you for just showing up and helping us out with this tonight. Especially, I want to say thanks to Shane and Renee who did a great job in formatting all this. Give them a quick round of applause for that. We appreciate you guys so much. All right. Well, this is, we have 90 more seconds for each candidate to kind of give us your heart and soul. Why do you want this job? What is it about it that compels you to serve your community in this way? I know that all of us here tonight are really grateful for how you've put yourself out there and you've shown your heart, you've shown what you care about. And so we want to give you 90 more seconds to kind of share just a little bit more about who you are and what you're going to be doing in this potential role. And we'll start with Alexis.
I want to use my 90 seconds to clarify my spicy lightning round response because I know you all are wondering. Once upon a time, I was a part of a march and that march wound up at an elected official's house unknowingly, believe it or not. I thought we were going out and about. And after a long march, it, we wound up somewhere. And so if I condition, I have to be able to take it right. So I would accept that of myself. But I want to be very clear that I want to ensure safety. I'm not talking about an explicit crime, but rather just this has been an experience. And I fundamentally believe that elected officials should be accountable, especially as our communities are struggling, which they are right now. And it's not something that I promote. I want to be very clear on that. I can understand it, especially when, when responses to what happens in community feels like they've, when they feel like they've run out of options. When the community feels as though they're so fundamentally not being heard that they're resorting to something dramatic like that, that, that is a sign. And so I'm committed to being a leader as, that is truly accountable in every way. And I've modeled that in my career. I've modeled that to community as I've organized and how I've shown up as somebody who's worked in government administration. And I will continue to be committed to that moving forward and always. So there's never an instance where somebody feels like they, they can't reach me. And I would not be the type of person to kick somebody out of chambers, that's for sure. With that, I would echo just how excited I am by the opportunity to serve this incredible community full of such vibrance and brilliance, especially in the midst of our ongoing challenges to address our housing crisis and address the budget crisis. And so with that, I am so proud to be amongst amazing support with a fantastic and growing team and amazing endorsements from progressive community leaders and labor unions now onwards together.
Let's pass to the council member, Bruce.
So I believe that complex issues demand hands-on solutions. And I come from community. I started off as somebody who built affordable housing in a neighborhood that is one of the most endangered neighborhoods in America. And not only that, but we offer affordable housing, workforce housing. So no one is forced to pay rent they cannot afford, but we charge a percentage of people's income as rent. And it's really important that we are able to have people work and live in the city as well as seniors are able to age in place. I also started a volunteer group called the Community Watch. And that is now four years old. And we consistently go out there. We go into the encampments. We talk to our unhoused neighbors. We work with our small businesses. We work with our seniors and people who live in our neighborhood. And this is a model I'm trying to bring to the whole city. I tackled some of the most, most difficult issues within my neighborhood. In South Seattle, we have 12th and Jackson. And we have similar areas in all of Seattle, Third Avenue, Pike and Pine, Aurora. And so how do we address how different the situation is with a different response for each neighborhood? Tackle gentrificationist placement. And I want to be able to build more affordable housing in the city based on my experience. So I believe that a lot of things that I've done, I can bring to the city as a whole. And that's what I'm doing right now. and that's what I'm doing right now. I'm working on legislation to do that, but it takes time. And a lot of people don't realize, like, when budget hits, we are not allowed to look at any of the other legislation. So I hope that you allow me to be able to continue the work that I'm doing, and able to bring forth this legislation in the next year or so, because it does take time to do CIPA and other stakeholdering as well. So I come from community, I have boots in the ground, I'm a proven leader, and I really do care about Seattle. This is my hometown. I wouldn't want to be any other place but here, and I've been going out to all the neighborhoods since the beginning of this year and learning about the really detailed issues and concerns. And I am excited that, you know, I wouldn't be able to do this work without you, and we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
I was raised in Holly Park, King Way Apartments and Yessler Terrace by my dad, a farmworker, ship crew member, and mechanic, my disabled mother, and a community of neighbors. And I kind of helped raise my little brother and sister, too. I studied at Seattle University and Seattle Central Community College, and I've been an active community organizer in Seattle for the last 20-plus years, working to help neighbors connect with food, transit, and housing resources. I share the lived experiences of issues currently facing Seattleites, and when I consider legislation, I ask, "What's the goal? Who benefits and who's harmed?" On City Council, I plan to bring the collaborative, detail-oriented perspective I developed as a software tester, CIF guest relations coordinator, and autistic communications teacher to bridge department silos and create an equitable and accessible Seattle for all. I focus on public services, like 24/7, 365 restrooms in parks, so everyone can enjoy the city through safe and accessible spaces. I'm proudly endorsed by the Transit Riders Union, where I co-founded the Bus and Transit Service Work Group and served as treasurer. I've collaborated with diverse groups of neighbors, including businesses, to expand bike and transit infrastructure alongside Cascade Bicycle Club, and advocated for that Office of Renting Standards with the Seattle Renter Organizing Council. I am a member of Teamsters 117, and I want to work with local unions to facilitate those apprenticeship programs I mentioned earlier. I am developing on the Board of Community Roots Housing. I want Seattle to become the livable place we know it can be, and if this is the Seattle that you want to help create, then I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
One more big round of applause for all of the candidates. Well done. Well done. Well, thank you, beautiful District 5 residents. It is such a pleasure to be with you here tonight, and we just again want to be thanking Pastor Laura and the church. We appreciate all of you, and all of our sound folks up there. Give them a round of applause in video. We appreciate you so much. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Shane.
Before we go, I do need to issue an apology. Tanya, I missed the question about the Gig App earlier, and that was not a fair question to you, so I apologize that got asked. But I do also want to say thank you for showing up. Your time here is really important, and you gave us a lot of really good information about how you're going to be representatives for us here in D5. So if we can get another round of applause for our candidates being here today. I'd also like to thank Renee, and TJ, and Colleen, and everybody that was a part of making this forum happen. I couldn't have done it without you. And thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I hope you'll have a great night.